Call this meeting to order at 5:01. And I would entertain motion for board chair.
I nominate Jill Scott Tyler.
Second?
Actually, do we need to be sworn in? Do Robin and I need to be sworn in first before I can nominate?
I don't know. You're not being sworn in either.
Because we're just elected. We have to.
Is that? We probably should have gone to central office and done that. I didn't realize if I remembered to do that until now.
Can we not have a meeting on? Can we just go ahead with the board as it was before and put all this off?
And put this off, yeah.
Because I think technically they can't.
Can't vote.
Can't vote if we say that we're.
Right, you can't vote.
Right?
So there's not a voting forum here.
You don't happen to have oath in your binder somewhere?
Usually they come here.
Well, you know, you might be able to look it up and do it right now. Because you can administer.
I can do it?
Yeah.
Do you know where I look it up?
I bet we can look for oath of office on. This will be a fascinating thing to have.
I bet races are, we can find it first.
Kim was our guy after this?
Barb, I thought you had to be a.
Notary or something?
Yeah, and I'm not a notary until July.
Yeah, well, it's not.
Brian used to do it at the beginning of meetings.
Yeah, but he was a notary and I'm not a notary until. You guys notaries, any of you?
Any of you noters?
Mm? No. Fascinating parent. So I don't think it matters if we find that or not from our oath of allegiance.
Then.
So you'll be ex officio, I guess.
Yes, then I guess.
So, yeah, we should probably just remember else along.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, you mean so we should do our nominations next meeting?
We'll have to do those because technically we cannot nominate.
Right, we can't approve.
We won't be wrapped on once.
You know, when I was new on the board, people made sure to tell me to do things. Now I'm just supposed to know on my own to do them.
There was a thing that came from Barb a while ago. Okay, so then I'm going to go back to, we'll assume that we're like a normal meeting, but we can't officially vote on things. So can we officially vote on anything like agendas?
No, I don't feel like we can vote on.
So by consensus, can we start and move the agenda around and start with the parents?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we can't actually give you an answer tonight, but we'd love to hear what you have to say. Come on, come on up and introduce yourself.
Sorry, I said anything?
I guess it's probably good you said something, though, because what if we later found out everything that we did at this meeting was illegal or something?
So I'd like to introduce Gil Rosenberg. He has brought up a board, as they are tonight. And Gil would like to request consideration of early admittance for his daughter going into first grade. So you can talk and I can add.
Sure. I don't know how much detail you want me to talk all day about in our situation, but she is, her birthday is early December, so she's about a month off from the cutoff in the policy, in the usual policy for when students will get tested to see if they're ready for early admittance. You with me?
I thought the early admittance was September and then up to October, so December would be way less.
Sixty days.
Sixty days after September 1st, so he's another month past that.
I thought it was thirty.
And she's not entering kindergarten, she would, it's not early admittance to kindergarten, she would be entering kindergarten, so it'd be, the request is that she enter first grade instead of kindergarten. So.
So she's going to be five or six?
She's five, will be six in December.
Good, she's done kindergarten, somebody sells?
Well, she's at Garland School. So she, you know, she's done Garland School for the past couple of years. We have an older daughter, so we're sort of familiar with expectations in different ways. Our older daughter has been ahead the whole time, and so, and we saw that Harper was at least as prepared as our older daughter was, comparatively, based on what we remembered from kindergarten, and we realized, oh, she pretty much knows everything that they've been a teacher in kindergarten. So that's why we made the request. First, our older daughter's at Brooke Rose, I talked to Jerry, and I talked to Superintendent Halliday, who suggested that we get her assessed. And so she met with Brian and Paul, both of whom, I got the whole report from Brian, just heard about the report from Paul, but my understanding is that they both said she was ready for first grade. Took those assessments a couple of weeks ago, so.
Is there anything we should know from your perspective, Jerry?
No, Gil is a father of, you know, their family's very involved with our community. We spoke a little bit. You know, we have his other daughter who's top of her class as well, and so, based on the reports, when I talked to Brian and Paul, it's not just, for me, it was to see how she, her scores kind of measure to the current cohort of kindergarteners that I have. So it's not to see if she's, you know, to see if she's at, you know, just in line with the other kiddos, and the report is very strong that she definitely is.
And do other principals have any comments?
Seldom do I not, but.
That's my question.
I don't know the child, so this is not coming about the child, it's about the process and just that when you make these decisions, you are subjectively. We get requested frequently to skip a grade or to enter early, or to enter in first grade. Frequently, meaning perhaps once a year, not frequently, meaning six times a week. But, and I personally have moved kids alone, and I find that at best it's a fifty-fifty proposition, have had to move a child back doing it. So I always tread very lightly on these things. I spend tons of time with the child, with the family, and just go very cautiously because I can guarantee once you do this, you're going to get more requests. So, so you need to determine what would be the determining factors, if not age, then what? Because what you're going to say now when you approve this is, if not age, it's academic ability based on two or three tests, okay? So what you're saying is, okay, so we no longer have this policy that is based on age, we make exceptions based on academic ability, based on tests that Brian does or someone does. So I'm not arguing for or against, I'm just cautioning you about what you're, what the foreword of the way you're about to do it works, good design.
We've been really careful. This is mostly, we're asked for students to come to kindergarten or stay in school a little bit longer because the family, they want to finish the year, something like that. And we've been really careful to always be as clear as we can that we do this on a case by case basis. So really, there's a precedent that we consider though. The criteria, you know, depends on the circumstance. But I think it's kind, I mean, it seems to me, based on what I've heard so far, that this is a request of probably the best thing for the student or your daughter, which is really, everybody's primarily concerned. And I think it's important to keep in mind that the whole reason that we have school boards is because policies give us really good guidelines, but there are times when there are exceptions, and that we need to recognize that and make room for those exceptions and not just to, that's life.
So, quick question here. Spoon, did you go get yourself sworn in?
You can't vote either.
We still don't have a forum.
Lyle, what's your, what is your recommendation?
Listening to both the results from Brian and from Paul academically, she's absolutely ready. I don't, I can't speak to her social emotional.
Do the preschool teachers have any comment on this? The teachers at the Garland School?
Her socialization levels and.
I don't have anything official. They think, informally, when we've talked to her teacher, she says she'll be fine anywhere, is what she says.
So I guess at this point, Coach, we have to just maintain all this until our next meeting, when people are sworn in and we can actually vote. Do we have any further questions?
Table the decision at topic meeting?
Right, everything tonight.
Can I just make one more comment just?
Right, I don't think we can move to table. I don't think we can do anything but just talk.
I'd just like to make one more comment, that the Rosenbergs, knowing through our conversation and knowing that this, an understanding of this process, did follow regular procedures in terms of registering their child for kindergarten, you know, attending kindergarten registration and making that registration. So, you know, they're, they're doing what they're supposed to do, but also understand that you're going to come before the board in, for your consideration in advancing her to first grade.
Sorry, Gil, about the, so we can't give you an answer, so.
Okay, she has whispers.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
I'll interview after the, after the next meeting and let you know.
Is that in two weeks?
I think we're not meeting in April. We could jump ahead on the agenda and have a discussion about that.
Okay, so two or three weeks or something?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jill.
Yes.
You know, the town clerk lives across the street.
Hillary?
Yeah, if you want to go get Hillary.
Isn't that a good idea?
I don't know, so.
I know her a little bit.
Exactly which house, though?
I'll message her. I'll see if she's available.
They have it for dinner.
Yeah, we'll just drop our whole meeting, drop in on Hillary for me. Okay, so maybe as long as we're kind of in this mode for a moment, could we look at April meetings and decide if we are having an April meeting, just so we know how long we're postponing stuff, because if we can't get people sworn in, there may be stuff that needed to move forward. April, what was the feeling for people? I don't think it was on our work agenda, I think we were not.
No, it's school vacation, no meetings, it's been on that, so we're in California.
Okay, so.
I mean, we could probably, we could probably convene a quick meeting the week of vacation.
I'm not here all that week.
You're not here.
But that doesn't mean.
We just need three people to vote on a few things. We could do that.
We could do that. I'm on vacation that week, so.
So you guys are here if we needed to meet in April?
Yeah.
But we weren't planning on having a full meeting, right? You guys weren't planning on coming?
No. But we could, like, we could vote on this.
So our next regularly scheduled meeting would be May 2nd. Yes? Just to keep that in our mind?
May 2nd.
Okay. Going back to the.
You know, if we're really stuck, I am willing to run across the street.
Well, she's trying to.
I'm messaging her, let's see if that works.
Looks like she works till 5:30.
Okay, so, I think while we're in this mode, I think we are okay to go ahead with the federal review. All right, so let's hand it over.
Okay, so, yeah. Christine Williams comes to us from Wisconsin, so she feels like she's home.
Although we just got a post. It might be a little warmer here.
And she is our, the federal reviewer, and winding up the week, she's here to interview you and I here to listen.
Thank you for taking time to speak with me. My role is to find out from you what you, your role and responsibilities, and to share with me, you know, some of the decisions, some of the discussions that you have had regarding the Head Start, early Head Start program. So first, my question is, is have you received any training on what your roles and responsibilities are?
Yes.
And can you speak to me what that includes?
David, you want to go first?
I think it's, we get, we've gotten booklets of policies, and I can't think of the names of all, we just got a new one a couple of weeks ago. It basically copies of the materials, we get updates when there's a change in the law, we get, I'm thinking about the monthly reports that we get, all the details that are on there, in terms of what's, how many kids have had dental checks, and how many kids have had well-mabye visits, what's the level of homelessness, absentees, staff shortages, staff needs, staff qualifications, and all of the guidelines for that, the background for that is part of what we've been dealing with all along.
When we came on, I think most of us also had, like, a time to sit down with Deb and go through, and there was a huge packet folder that we went, looked at it, and went through the roles, what our, the expectation was on the board, and how Policy Council fit in, what Policy Council was made up of for membership, and how in general the relationship has been between the school and the school board and schools and supervisory union with the early Head Start and Head Start arms.
Okay, thank you for that. I've seen the monthly reports that you receive, as well as the financial reports that you receive. What, in addition to that, outside of those old reports, have you received?
Maybe Robin, you want to talk about Policy Council reports, or are you still on the meeting?
I'm just messaging Hillary. The Policy Council reports?
Yeah, we hear monthly.
Yeah, at the meetings, Deb gives an update of, and also David, who's on that committee, give updates of what's been going on in the past month, and any issues that are coming up that need to be addressed, like staff shortage, or when we had to split our Westminster Head Start into half-days, and funding things that need our attention.
Is that something that you want to vote on?
Yes.
And typically, we vote, sorry, after Policy Council, so that Policy Council can make those decisions first, and we have the input from Policy Council, so that we're not imposing so much on the things that are there, and the people that are closest to it.
We also get updates for, I'm thinking of things like, there was a child that was kind of in between the inside and the outside door at one point, so there's a report on that that had to be filed on the response, and with the enrollment issues, with the staffing issues that we've had, we, you know, the notifications that you cite, not even personal, your office sends to Deb, we get, we see all those and talk about those as well.
Anything that comes to me as chair or policy is to share with everybody else.
And Deb also always lets us know events that are going on. I know there's one coming up, and invites us and wants us to participate, so that way we can, you know, meet the families. And I know with Policy Council, we have a yearly meeting with them, and they sit down and.
Coming from June.
Yes, they, you know, so we do a Policy Council meeting as a whole gigantic board, and to start the meeting off.
Workers are in that meeting?
A normal Policy Council meeting, first. So our meetings are normally two hours. I think someone said once, an hour and a half, but we don't seem to enroll on that. But about the first hour goes to Policy Council, and then they're welcome to stay for normal school board business, or move on if they wish. And then we also rotate our membership on Policy Council, so I know I've been on, Kim's been on, and David's been on, and Robin and Spoon are relatively new members, so the board certainly haven't had their turn yet.
So I know you receive and you talk about a lot of data that you get. How do you use that data? What do you do with it?
I think you asked Deb a lot of questions.
I was thinking.
You know, like, how come these kids aren't getting these, well, child business? But I think we, the focus for the last couple of years, you were on last year, Jill?
No. I was on for two years before.
So you were for the process of creating the school Head Start campaign. So I think that's one of the things that's really occupied a lot of our time in the board, in terms of creating that, but also in terms of looking at what seems to be the biggest issue, which is finding qualified people that'll work for the insignificant money that we offer them. And one of the ways, and I'm going to let you talk about that, one of the ways we try to help with that is just move it into the school and get some professional salaries and see if we can't expand that out, and take advantage of the support the state's providing now to try and get more, to show some good results and try and get more support.
And I know Deb worked really hard with, with our previous superintendent, Ron, in working to get the pay, pay grades up as much as possible, and, you know, that was.
It's still an ongoing effort.
Yes, ongoing effort, but it has improved.
Also, use of data, Deb prepares data for the representative town meeting informational night, so that the town meeting reps know, these are the, these are the struggles, and these are some of the successes that we have, when they're going to town meeting and thinking about schools, and so that's a number of uses of the data.
And so, from Wisconsin, coming from Illinois, we do not have town meeting? Do you have any idea what town meeting is?
Yes, politicians do, I'm glad.
Well, yeah, yeah, and here, that's an actual vote on budgets.
Yeah, it's different than a town hall. It's like the form of city governance where the, in our school district, people from the town are elected to vote on approving the budget for the school district, which includes the Head Start program. So they have to hear everything about what's going on, and then they vote, yes, spend that money, hopefully.
Which, they said yes.
They did say yes.
So you ensure that you're understanding the financial information?
I think the financial information that comes from Deb is fantastic. I mean, it's very clear, there's not much that's difficult to understand.
And you don't like that.
And I don't like that. But it's very, it's, what I like about it is it comes with a percentage of how much is spent, you know, from the total budget, up to date with where we're at. I'm always the one looking at the end time to ask me about that one. But it's, I mean, I don't know why we would have any problems.
We see the credit card reports, and just all the spending, all the check register, it's pretty much, pretty transparent.
Sure. The self-assessment, are you familiar with that process?
We haven't done it for a little while, but we do it every once in a while. So I don't know if Robin and Spoon have done a self-assessment yet.
Not that you do, but the program does. It's more for the self-assessment.
Yes, we do, there's one with self-assessments around here. So the program self-assessment that we, yes, I think that's the annual.
Yes.
Meeting in June, usually, and quite often, it's right around the time when we have our school board meeting with the Policy Council, so we hear how that went under May, early June.
And are you familiar, do they share with you the progress that children are making toward, you know, their development?
Yeah, but not only does it share that at our meeting, one of us is usually at that or more, it usually goes to that whole day, so.
Okay.
I know I've attended, David, you've been a couple of times.
Yeah, one time ago.
I've been recently.
Can you think of one policy or procedure that's been brought to you for approval recently?
Changing the, well, asking for the end time change was probably recent.
She can't speak.
I was just saying, that's probably one of the last ones, or also the Westminster situation.
Yeah, the decision to go to half-days.
Yes.
To have to go to half-days.
But we've also talked about things like busing, and whether or not to keep a bus.
It's been previous.
And, yeah, or the whole moving one of the classrooms into one of our public schools. That was a huge policy shift in how we were, and that, as David alluded to, that was a lot of time of looking at data and seeing, seeing what's going on right now, what's going on in our schools, how prepared the kids are when they're coming out of the program and coming in, and listening to our principals at the elementary level, which is kind of the fun circular part of this, or the continuum, and then trying to decide how we could best help that population. And Deb had previous experience with more of a blended classroom, and so we're looking at that, and I think everybody would say we're excited by the result.
Last question. Which just asked me. I don't have a last question. I know as soon as I leave, I'm going to say, oh, about this. Oh, yeah, now I remember. Are you aware of what the criteria is for someone to be selected to go to Head Start?
Yeah, that's another.
Someone to be.
To go to the Head Start program.
The criteria, we look at that, actually, and that comes before us, after it's gone to policy again, Policy Council first.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions about the review process itself?
Are you here for the whole week?
To our last day. We've been here since Monday, looking at the centers, classrooms, talking to staff, looking at all their data, and now speaking with you.
Maybe ask how it's going?
Unfortunately, that's the opposite of Head Start, that makes that decision. We just collect all the information, but we have been able to get all the information from Deb and our staff. They were very helpful, so I can tell you that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So do we have an update on the town warehouses?
She said that she doesn't have the oath or the materials that she would need to swear us in. So she was like, Barb could do it, and I was like, yes, that's what we were supposed to do.
I did text Barb, but I haven't heard back from her, so.
She has.
She has family.
All right, so let's move on down this agenda and do what's, you know, things as we can. Yes.
Jill, as long as we just did the EES stuff.
There might be more Policy Council and EES reporting, but that was the federal review.
Yeah, I understand, but, I mean, like we were on the subject. I know it's a big problem there with wages and trying to find enough staff. And then, in thinking about that, I think back, and I remember feeling pleased, like everybody else did, that we were bringing a school budget that had no increase whatsoever. And I'm wondering, I can't remember anymore, I mean, I was here, but still too new to really understand what questions needed to be asked or being there, or this, why we weren't adding something to the budget to increase the wages over there, knowing what the extent of that problem is.
Well, it's a separate budget, so I think we'll let Lyle answer the differences between, there's a Head Start budget that comes from federal money, so it's not taxpayer money funding the salary.
Okay, that's why we're talking about that.
But we, it is, we do fund our, just part of the staff.
Right. So. The preschool.
The preschool portion, yeah.
That person's employee, that's under contract, it's the contractor's salary, so we can't just toss money over there. It's a, it's contracted.
We could do one person.
Yeah, yeah, one, one even member raises.
That's the preschool, that's, you know.
And the other thing is that there's a mechanism through Act 166, because the school district is the recipient of that money, and so our relationship with Act 166 gives us the leverage to draw down some of that money through the Department of Education. It's not, it's not, you know, it's not town money, but it's, it's state money that we wouldn't, because of the relationship we have with people to access.
Who do you ask for more money for your staff?
Everybody.
Bernie Sanders has heard that, he's been here and.
But it has to be from the federal?
Well, it doesn't, I mean, at one point, the town Bratford donated $50,000 to EES, and then when we moved into the Act 166 world, that kind of got smushed into the budget. I mean, we, there, anybody and everybody can donate to Head Start or early Head Start, but our, our primary funding source is the, is the federal budget.
And we do donate through end times with different, different parts in the budget.
All right, I'll talk about it next year with the budget.
All right, so then we're going to skip the warrants. I'm actually not going to do any motions of anything, because I don't think I can, I don't really know. So we're not approving minutes, we're not approving the agenda, we're just moving on, we're not doing warrants. Deb, you're first on the committee reports, was there anything else from Policy Council?
We lost our Policy Council chair. Yesterday morning, there was supposed to be an interview with four Policy Council members, mostly coming from Westminster, and for one reason or another, no one showed, and I had a late-breaking email from our chair who said for personal reasons, he needed to resign. So actually, just before this meeting, one of our other Policy Council reps, Molly, had a conversation by phone with the, with the federal union, and it went well. There, we will have, let's see, so we had a Policy Council meeting last week, and likely we'll speak to that. We're gearing up for the April 14th event with the EES, everybody's invited, and next week, there will be a regional conference that I'm attending in Massachusetts. I have, I will say that I think this week has gone well, and I would be surprised to find that there were any findings that were of significant concern, any, and staff worked really hard for this review, so we're thinking about a way that we might offer some small offer some small token of appreciation. The management team is convened tomorrow afternoon.
Was there something sent to us about having to have a meeting because of the under-enrollment?
Right, thank you. So, so if you remember, last May, we, we had to go to Boston to speak to the under-enrollment problem with early Head Start and home-based home visiting. So that, that period will come to a close on, on May 24th, and the hope is that we will be fully enrolled there, which at this moment we are, and so I'm not worried, I think we'll be released from that scrutiny. And now, because of the double session issue in Westminster, we have lost some families. They didn't meet their needs. And so now we're under-enrolled at Head Start. So now we're on a new cycle. It looks like there'll just be a phone conversation, I won't have to go to Boston. They already know why, so I, and we've already, and we have a plan to go resume to full day to classrooms no later than April 30. We have finally found the teachers, and they're, they're right now going to be, going through an orientation period, and we are closed for that April break, so it didn't make sense to start until after the break. So I think we're back on track.
And I think the, the ongoing staff search and the fact that Westminster's gonna be able to go to that fifth day, I think is the thing, the main thing, I think that came from that last policy council meeting. The other thing that, and Kim, you may understand this, but I think it was two months ago, we had interviewed a bunch of teachers, and then at the last policy council meeting, the process of getting their, well, who knows, the background checks and all the paperwork, I mean, they still were not in place. And I think now they're in orientation, and it's astonishing how long it takes to actually, once you hire somebody and you can't start paying them for two months.
Actually, they are being paid for orientation.
Oh, thank God. Because people, you can find somebody and they would just say, oh, I need something right now.
Right, yeah, we, we made sure that they were being paid for that.
Yeah, so that was kind of, that was amazing, the amount of time it's involved in the process.
It is, it's very long, with all the background checks needed for Head Start. It's amazing.
And it's, I mean, I understand why they have to, in a situation like this, it really makes it hard.
So, energy committee, I don't believe is meeting?
Nope.
Next committee report is Act 46, Alternative Governance Subcommittee.
We continue to, well, actually, what we did last meeting was break up into groups and develop some responses to the questions that the state board is gonna ask, and we're in the process of refining them. And then Thursday, we meet again to kind of practice and rehearse the responses that we're gonna, that'll happen on Monday when the alternative people go up to Mont Peculier.
And it's really not the alternative folks that are going up, it's Dummerston and Vernon, yes?
And representatives from all the other boards, too.
But it's the slotted time for Dummerston and Vernon. And then in July, the alternative governors can go up as well.
Yeah. But the, yeah, but the rest of the people from other boards on the committee are going up on Monday as well.
But it, yeah, so it's, it's speaking twice, kind of, for the alternative governance.
Well, one is in front of the agency and the other's in front of the state board.
Do we have to go up and play the state board, too? Anything else on Act 46? There's a, under new business as well, so.
Nope.
I have a communication that I could, that goes with this.
For the, for the alternative governance?
It's for all Act 46. It came today from Senator Tim Ash, Senator Bill Veruth, Krista Hurling, Chair of the State Board, Representatives Mitzi Johnson, Governor Phil Scott, and Representative David Sharp. The subject is Act 46, Schedule and Process. We write to assure you of our commitment to the current schedule and process of Act 46 of 2015. This work is an important step forward for Vermont's system of education. We appreciate the hard work of communities, school boards, and school staff, and to all those that have successfully moved through the process. We look forward to continuing this good work in accordance with the existing timeline and statutory requirements. Please contact Donna Rosa Savage at the Agency of Education if you have questions about the schedule or process. So that's to assure you that the meetings are still scheduled at the.
And the interim secretary is in place, the assistant secretary is in the interim.
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, finance?
Not met.
And you passed along the warrants to us all by email, so if we're interested, we can see that?
Yes.
Executive committee update, nothing there, 'cause you haven't met.
Nope, not met.
Diversity, Robin?
We haven't had a meeting since our last school board meeting, but there's a bunch of organizing that's continuing to go on for the diversity day celebration. We're gonna have, I think, a street food, international street food thing that the downtown Rattleboro Alliance is inviting restaurants to participate in and sell something at an affordable cost for families, and there's a bunch of community partner organizations that are gonna have tables or booths or whatever added, and hopefully.
This is the May Gallery one.
Performances, yes, but they had another thing fall through with the space for the art exhibition, so now they're hoping to have it in those MD storefronts in the Emerson Building. It was supposed to be in the Sunell Building, and they keep having things where they seem to book something, and then later on, the business gets back and says, oh, actually, turns out you can't have that space, so.
River Garden is not there?
I don't think the River Garden was one of the ones that they tried to book, but it was originally, they were trying to do it in 118 Elliott and then the Sunell Building, and now this is the, the next, hopefully, space for that indoor part of it and where they're gonna be able to display artwork, and hopefully, I don't think they'll have it open to the public throughout the month, but at least have stuff up in the windows that people can see as they walk by for the rest of May.
Other committee reports that I don't know?
Quick question, I just found out about it, that the group of students are going to Boston on Friday to, to walk down the African-American Historical Trail in Boston, are elementary schools, or is that part of the university committee or that?
No.
No, it's just the high school.
Mikail, let's take this.
Mikail, I think it's high school where.
Oh.
All right, so move on to administrative reports. Jerry, let's start with you. By the way, it occurs to me that these things that we pass around, we should be posting on the website. Warren, Barb, these administrative reports, we should put on the, will we, Jerry, do you want?
Are documents on the website? Yep, for now?
They, they're documents that you asked.
For our old ones?
That you know all the way.
I'll have to. Something, hold my head, show me.
We have not posted these, I think we should talk about that. My concern being that there could be, when we talk about students moving in from a certain place, that there's one student that's moved in from one particular place at a school, then they're easily identifiable. My other concern is about the DCF, safety checks in smaller schools, it could be, they could be easily identifiable, so.
We should publish stuff. Because there's an example on my report on a row that I won't, I'll just draw your attention to, but I won't read it out loud on camera. Under the moved and transferred, exactly what Lyle's talking about, the third one down, that could easily, I mean, I'm a small school, so you could easily identify that particular.
So perhaps we can do written reports that don't say that and we just talk.
Yeah, 'cause as soon as this is handed out, it's public.
It is public, exactly.
So we need to get that, take that out, and.
But I think it's still great information for the board to know, so maybe that's part of the oral report that you guys just note, that there was.
Can we say just numbers? There were three that moved in.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I, I mean, I think it's really important, when you're saying right now here, that there's, I think, ARCC program, is that, is that a special out-of-district placement? What is that program?
Yes.
I didn't say who it is, I just said that there's one student. So the one student, then we need, I mean, that's something we should know, is an out-of-district placement. We, we should know about that, but maybe we should hear about it as.
Executive meeting?
No, or maybe in a conglomerate of the three schools, then? Does that feel better? But, I mean, we, we would be remiss if we don't note that that happens.
I would not wanna put DCF reports up there at all.
Which reports then?
The DCF.
The number of reports.
I mean, I don't think that's something I'd wanna put on the website.
I think maybe if the one, if we wanted to be open though, these documents, but just hide a few more personal elements of the data, that those fields could be deleted before this was forwarded to Barb to post on the website, and just have those transfers and DCF reports not be part of what was posted publicly, or is that violating the law?
I think we're gonna have to, one more time, talk about it, 'cause I don't know, I mean, why just saying we did five DCF reports would be, would cause harm to anyone or to the district.
I don't know if it caused harm, I can just tell you that I'm not comfortable with it, and it just doesn't feel like something I wanna, to me, and I speak for myself, doesn't feel like something I wanna put on the website. We report to you, it's, I think it's relevant, 'cause it informs you of our schools, what's going on, and of the work that we're doing, you know, it gives us an inkling of the kinds of distress, for example, that the children are under. But I wouldn't put it on the website any more than that. If I own a store in town and I have a beautiful website, I'm not gonna put, I'm not gonna put everything about my store on, I'm not gonna put how many, how much I lose annually from shoplifting. I just don't think this is a figure to get out to the public on the website.
Well, so I, I'm hearing all sides of this, but I mean, what David said, I think in the beginning, is right on. Once we, anything we distribute here is public knowledge, and anybody can ask for it. And so finding the, I'm kind of back where Robin was, of finding the balance between getting this information to the board, which we passed on to the town meeting and made that the main point, you know, this is the realities of the school, and we did that at that time in more of a global perspective, so that it's not so easily tracked, like you're saying. And, but, but clearly, I mean, I wanna know if we've got students going to an out-of-district placement, because that's a dramatic effect on the budget, and that's one of the things that we've been putting investments in, so that we can keep those numbers down. We wanna see when we're doing that. So maybe, maybe they, we have to go back to saying all the DCF reports and want from all schools get together, and you guys just.
Just get one.
Get one number.
I mean, there are lots of, lots of things in here that we put on, and I understand what you're saying, that it's, that it's public, if people ask for it. There are a lot of things under the demographics that are there for you to look at, but we don't always announce them, you know, I don't always draw your attention to our homeless members or our DCF reports or, you know.
And I don't know that a million people are going out to look at the website anyway, but, right?
I wonder if it's permissible, I mean, all of this is like, we're looking at how are we being transparent as far as the law, the open meetings law, and I wonder if, how is something like available on request in compliance with that? If we could have this as something that was not on the website, but that we could just post, like, monthly reports where the schools are available on request if a particular person wanted to say, I'd like to know what's going on at that school, they could request it without it being like broadcast?
And that's probably true, but I'm still coming back to the idea that, one of the things I hear from the community members at town meeting is, wow, you guys did a great job on explaining what's really going on in the schools, we didn't realize that that was going on, and we wanted to know. And the second is that I hear from parents, you know, just anecdotally, or they say, and teachers, and schools are like, we're glad that this type of information gets out, 'cause people should know what our realities are. So I, I kinda want that information to be more easily accessible, but I don't want us to break privacy. Paul's got to hand over.
I'm not sure that it would be a solution for all of these categories. In general, if you're, when I'm reporting numbers, I can report N less than 10. And any number here that's less than 10, instead of the number you would fill in, N for sample size, less than 10. So that, from your point of view, if numbers start to skyrocket, they will go above that number and you will know it. But as long as they're less than 10.
Yeah, but 10 DCF reports in a month, I'd wanna know, or eight, I mean, that's a lot.
Well, it is a lot, but I also would suggest to you that the website is a marketing tool. When, when a lot of folks move to our community, they pay particular attention to the schools, those who have young children or who wanna raise a family, the schools are a big, big part of that decision. And I think that, you have to look at this, this is, you know, look at this like this is a business. We want people to, to use our business. Then I think we wanna, wanna promote the good things that we're doing on the website. I don't think that, that, that those putting a lot of these numbers out there are doing that. I think they go the opposite way. It's very hard to bring professionals to this community. They, they, you know, you can talk to employers who hire professionals, and they have a really hard time selling our community right now. We have people who come here and who wanna work in our, in our businesses, and then they spend time. And, you know, right now, unfortunately, there's a lot of adverse things occurring downtown, because they've been on Elliott Street, they've been on Plastique, and they say a lot of things that scare them. You know, I suggest that we really think about that and we market our schools to attract those families here.
So not everything in here, though, falls under that. I mean, all of the student programming stuff on the bottom falls under your category of marketing. That's good.
Yeah.
And I think that move, the students moving in and out, one, one person, Academy just put the state, it didn't say specifically where to. That would help preserve.
Although, I mean, I like hearing if it's Skillford or whatever, just because that influenced my way of looking at merger discussions and hearing and knowing that we do have kids that are within our own supervisory union that would like to possibly stay in our own schools, and we couldn't provide that.
I'd like to bring up something actually, based on what Andy just said, and that I've been thinking about that sort of relates to that. This is not totally about the reports here, but I feel like one of our biggest problems is just the declining number of students overall, not just our schools, but in general, that, and I know somebody had told me that Putney actually had a couple of people that said, we saw your website and this school looked awesome, so that's why we decided to move to Putney instead of wherever else around. You know, they wanted to come to this area, they saw that school looked great, and they went there. And I wonder if there's something that we could do in that direction, sort of as more intentionally marketing what's great about our schools. Also, related to what you said, Jill, I think that we could do a lot more to outreach to the community about what our board does and what's going on in our schools. And right now, we have, all of this information is available, but it's not necessarily known that it's available. Like, how many people go and watch BCTV or go onto the website and look at the minutes of our meetings? It's there if you want to seek it out, but no one's saying, hey, guys, look at this, let's all be involved in it. So I, that was something I was gonna bring up when we have our retreat of like, I would love if we could talk about how to do a little bit more outreach to get people from the community interested and involved in what we're doing, and also to sort of sell our schools a little bit more.
That's all? I was gonna say that, but I, oh, I'm sorry, Jill, go ahead.
Let's, let's move.
I, I agree that all the documents that we have in front of us at a meeting should be on the website, along with the meeting minutes and whatever, and what, what transpired. That's normal, and I know it's certainly normal on the state level, every document that, that every committee looks at is there for the public. I understand your point, Andy, about something on, on here that wouldn't look so good to somebody, but it also seems to me that one line on a report, on a school report for Academy School is just so obscure, it would take a, some kind of a nerd beyond belief that would actually be, be looking at a school web. at a school website in that detail, and finding that, and even understanding what DCF meant if they lived out of state, and having that make a difference.
And it is not.
I, I disagree with that.
I feel like as a parent, I am that nerd. I would definitely, if I would have thought of this idea before I moved here, I would have totally been like, okay, what are these schools like? And then I'd be like, hmm.
We have to protect every child, and if that information gets out, even on one child, we've not done our job.
And I, I do think that these.
We're not associating any names, we're just.
No, but you can figure, but you can figure some stuff, like Jerry says.
If you go to the school, and then you're like, hmm, I noticed that so-and-so's not in class anymore, and then you go on the website, and you're like, oh, that must have been the kid who went to that place. I think that's what they're saying is identify.
I'm talking about somebody that lives from away, who's thinking about moving to this town, which they're probably not even thinking of unless they have a job that they're gonna come to, and it's, and it's already set. But it's not a positive mark, and hopefully, we have lots of other things that aren't positive, and as a whole, it's okay. And, but I just feel like you should be able to find, if, if it's important for us to know, and, and if it's a document that we have, it should be available.
I'd like to get.
I was gonna say, can we ask council?
About specifically some of these that we know, DCF.
Well, here's an idea, how about if we leave it to the administration to look at the report? You've heard the concerns that we'd like it to be, the information that we're getting is what we want to know. But I don't think.
But if it's not in the report, we don't have to post it. They can tell us about it.
Exactly. Or you could do it in the aggregate, so that it's not as clearly there, and you could just say, or you could, you, that's what I'm thinking, you all could figure out what you feel comfortable with.
I do feel like what Andy's saying, though, like, if I, if you're trying to attract, I think professionals are the people that are, some of the people that are likely to be those nerds that go on the website and be like, hmm, what's this school all about? And I don't feel like this is a very accurate reflection of what it would feel like to enroll a child in Academy Schools. I know the school very well, and, and that could be.
This isn't on the Academy School website. This is on the super, the supervisory union link out to the Brattleboro Town School District, link out, you know, find, then the documents according to one meeting. So that, that's where I'm thinking you would have to be digging really hard to ever find this sort of information. I think it's more public information for people that are actually following this on a regular basis.
I can see that.
I, I, yeah, I don't, I disagree.
Do you ever go look for the documents, or you know where, how to find them now? For the documents that are with our website?
Yeah, of course.
It's pretty easy to find them on the new website. The old one was a little more arcane about figuring out what was where. Now, it's just like, you're like, our schools, okay, I'll look at that, Brattleboro Town Schools, oh, there they are. Oh, there's all the meetings and the S-compliment documents of what happens at each meeting. So it's very direct to find these now.
But the documents are the agenda and the minutes.
Yeah, but if we put these on.
And whatever, it's supposed to also have a column for supporting documents, whatever like is, that we circulate to one another.
Have we been putting things on there?
Yes, if it's been like, like when.
Like Robbins, Robbins thing about the gun control, we put that on there.
Oh, okay. But that's relatively new.
Right, yes, yeah. That's why we're having the discussion now, because it hasn't existed up until right now.
The important thing, this is information that we have asked for, and we've refined it over a couple of years now, so that we're getting, kind of getting the information that we want. And I think that knowing the number of DCF reports there is, is part of that. And I think it's important to see it by school, so that we can see if there's.
But we ask for this information, not knowing.
Please, let me finish. If, the only thing that I think the administration should be looking for is any place in here where a student could be identified, which clearly exists in this case. And the example that, I don't remember who gave it, about somebody sees, oh, somebody's out of class, and then they look at this on the website, and they know who it is. That can't happen. That has to be not available. But all the rest of this should be there. If, if we have it, it belongs to the public as well. We don't get to say that, well, gee, you know, it would look good. And I think in the, I always prefer to err on the side of transparency, instead of trying to, to shepherd or keep information close to the vest, because it's not our job to do that. Our job is to share everything that we know with the public, to the extent that they wanna know it. If it's, if we don't put it in this, if it's not in this report, and we know it, it has to be an executive session, if it's not gonna be public. And that's, the criteria for that are very specific. And again, if it's, it's gotta be something that's gonna hurt an individual, and that's what we would like you to make sure isn't.
So can we agree to leave this to the administrators to hash out a little bit more?
Yeah.
And come back to us in the next meeting, even though we can't actually pass a motion to actually officially ask you to do that tonight?
I mean, I think that we sort of have to keep our whole agenda as the next meeting's agenda, any actionable items, or just like, remain on.
Right. So can I just say that from a head start perspective, these are numbers that we have to make up? But that's done annually through our program information report. So we are required to make this information up.
But head start is a little bit different, because there's a reason why the families are involved with the program, whereas this is just like, they're there because it's school, and that's what's, the schools that are here in our town.
So I guess, Jerry, we were in the middle of your administrative report, was there anything you wanted to say?
I'm not sure, other than I.
Speechless, they're all about.
Not sure how much to say.
Well, to highlight the great stuff that's going on in our school, and the things that are coming up this next week, we have a very busy week going on. We have two breakfasts that will happen on Monday and Friday for our families. We have Arts Night next week, which I believe is on the 11th, I think that's a Wednesday, that's Wednesday night, so please swing on by, it starts at 5:30. It's our Arts Night.
Arts Night is Wednesday.
Next Wednesday? So it starts with music with Andy Davis, and this will be his last year, so I'm sure it's gonna be fabulous, as it always is. And then, it starts in the gym with music, all, he brings all the students up on stage. And then Kathy Crafts Allen, our art teacher, has been putting art, amazing artwork up all over the building, so.
And what time is that, and what time is the breakfast?
You can come to either breakfast on Monday, or Friday, or both, if you like. So breakfast starts at eight, eight to nine. Arts Night is starting at 5:30. And then if you feel like.
Remind us all of our, our goals that we haven't really been working on as a board. One of them was to get to more things in the school, so.
And then if you wanna get a little STEM action in there as well, the Vermont Energy Education Program, otherwise, otherwise known as VEEP, they provide free programming to schools, you just have to reach out to them and contact them, and they, we did that last year, and they did a, an energy saving with like LED light bulbs and stuff, and we thought, oh, I don't know how this is gonna go. The kids had a blast. Brought in a bike, and the kids all got a chance to ride the bike to watch, you know, which incandescent bulb, or LED bulb, which one used less energy to keep it going longer. And he had, you know, a bunch of different types, types of stations. So this year, we're getting VEEP to come for two days, and they're doing programming for K all the way up to six. And those dates are the 11th and the 12th, so you could come in late in the afternoon, do a little STEM with us, and then stay for Arts Night. Be great. Let me know if you're coming. I'll get coffee and bacon for the evening, or burger, kids know I have a burger too. So, there you go. Thank you.
Andy? Well, speaking of breakfasts, we today concluded our family breakfast for the spring. Today was K1. We did, we do K1 one day, then two, three, and then we did four, five, six last week. So it's taken a while because of the weather, we had cancellations and stuff, but today was K1. All total, we served nearly 900 meals in those three, three days. We did different themes. Today was K1, it was Mexican. We did African food for four, five, six, and Indian food, food from India for grades two and three. Great turnout, it was a great time as usual. We are in the midst of two searches, presently. Search for a physical education teacher, interviewing candidates next week, and also I'll interview, time's not scheduled yet, but for assistant principal, that is out. We as, all the schools in Vermont are now scheduling our S-PAC for grades three, four, five, and six. That'll be beginning for most schools sometime after April break. And we're also interviewing interns for, teaching interns from Antioch. We're interviewing three people before the break for potential internships next year.
And there were three this year, or four?
Well, we had four slots, we had four originally, and one of the interns dropped out of Antioch in background Thanksgiving time, so there were three beyond that point. So there are four slots, right now we have, we have three people who've applied with the potential, there are other people who are interested, and they've not been accepted by Antioch yet.
Have you received a lot of applications for PE and the assistant principal?
No, unfortunately. PE, interesting. Interesting that you ask, because around 19 applications, but at least six were not qualified, had no license. It's interesting because a lot of, but sometimes we get positions where folks, well, I coached before, so I can teach PE, or I.
I played basketball.
I worked at the rec center with kids, and, you know, taught, in a little league instructor or whatever. And I have, you know, I'm athletics, so I could do it. But it's not, you need to be a license, you need to be licensed, a license of volume of Vermont for physical education. So the applicant pool is not that large for assistant principal, four people. And it's been posted for around two weeks. So that's remarkably a charitable pool at this point. That's all I got, thank you.
Mark?
Okay. Since our budget's passed, we have began our advertisement for school social worker. So we're excited about getting into that process. We've got a handful of applicants at this point, so, not a ton right now. But getting to my report, towards the bottom, student programming, our after-school program, session three started up on April 2nd. Like I shared at our last meeting, we have 206 spots, over 20 activities that we're offering for the third session, so, super exciting time of year for us. The town school theater partnership with Oprow Academy in Green Street and NEYT also started up on April 2nd. We have 10 students from Green Street participating in that program. Looking over to the backside, wanna highlight some student senate work, and I know they'll be doing a presentation a little later in the spring, but as you remember from the fall, we received a very nice donation from McDonald's, the new opening of the McDonald's, $6,000 donation. Student senate has been going through a process throughout the year to identify how they want to spend that money to improve the school. What has been decided on is, in the back of our playground, we have a natural hill. So they've decided they'd like to spend the money on installing an embankment slide into that hill of the playground. So they researched with help from Eugene Arhikasodian, three different styles of slides. They went out, presented, did PowerPoints all the classrooms, initiated a school-wide vote, and the student body has selected a embankment slide that will be hopefully installed, if not before the end of the school year, shortly after the school year. But it's exciting, and it was an overwhelming decision that the students made. Couple other things I just wanna highlight, a few years ago, we started a destination imagination team, and we had a squad go up to Burlington, Vermont on March 24th for the statewide tournament, and our students finished in second place, which is a really nice, nice accomplishment for that team. They came back and did their presentation during the school sing, super proud of themselves and their work. And then, something I'd really like to highlight in terms of getting into the schools, if you guys are available, our school musical, Wizard of Oz, is ready to go. Kids, you could see the kids leaving tonight, they started some rehearsals at 2:00, left at around 5:30. So they've been putting a ton of time into this musical. We're doing a school performance tomorrow at 10:00 AM in place of school sing. And then tomorrow night, 6:00 PM, and Friday night, 6:00 PM, giving two evening performances. So, the costuming is terrific, the music sounds really good, kids are nervous, but if you could make an event, I think that would be a great one to choose. And then we also talked a bit about outreach. Our art teacher, Rachel Mangene, and I began a conversation last year around Arts Night, and wanting to, since we're so close to downtown Brattleboro, how could we schedule our Arts Night where it's close to Gallery Walk? So the dates on the report are actually wrong, if you wanna make some edits. Our Arts Night is gonna be May 3rd, and then, so which is a Thursday night. May 4th, the following night, is Gallery Walk. So we've signed the school up to be a site for Gallery Walk on May 4th, so that Friday evening, the school will be open to the community. We'll have our classroom doors locked, but all the hallways will be hopefully filled with people checking out our art program and the artwork.
Five o'clock?
That's in the first year.
It is, but then they could just walk up to Elliot Street and continue the party, because that goes all the way till eight, so.
Library will be open with all kinds of artwork on display, so, really proud of our art program, and feel like it's a great way to share it with more than just our school community, to get more people in the building. So that'll be Friday night, April 4th, I mean, May 4th, sorry. And then the following day, May 5th is our tulip trial. Lot going on.
Deb, did you have anything else for Mr.?
No.
So, you?
I have something that you can't vote on, Bud, I have a letter here.
Are we making a note somewhere, or do you have to come back and re-sign? Is there, so far, have we?
So far, it's.
Parents and the.
Minutes and attendants and.
I put it in here, it's like, discussion will happen next, I put it in here, like, discussion will happen next meeting.
Cause I gotta pull those out for next.
It is with great enthusiasm that I resign from my current position as assistant principal of Academy School in order to move into the role of the principal. I've enjoyed all that my current role has to offer, and I look forward to the new challenges and learning next year and beyond. So Kelly's asking for.
We probably shouldn't move on that. If we've got an assistant, you may have to do both.
All right. So that would be something we'll need to act on next time. I read the memo from the legislature, April 6th. Do you wanna talk about August?
Can we get that all into the.
On August 6th? That's fine. That's it.
Oh, you should be able to watch.
Well, I have a lot, but it's all, like, I have budgets, I have integrated field review, I have some S-PAC stuff, so it's all covered.
We didn't have any unfinished business unless anyone knew of some. So I didn't know that. All right. We've done the federal review, the parent request, integrated field review, this has been tabled.
Yes, many times. So I had sent you many weeks ago, the summary of the integrated field review. In, in November, the Agency of Education sent a team of educators to Wyndham Southeast. It included people from, classroom teachers, elementary, middle, high schools, special educators, administrators, curriculum, curriculum and assessment coordinators, and they visited all of our schools in Wyndham Southeast. And they visited all of our schools in Wyndham Southeast and prepared a report for us that was commendations and recommendations, and I had given you all of those. Before we got the formal report, someone came from the Agency of Ed to review our results. I think one of the strongest comments from the administrative team to them is that the results were SUY, so no school could say, oh, this is what you found for us, and this is something that we should be working on. So everything that's a commendation and a recommendation is SUY.
Why did they do that?
I'm not sure. Maybe Paul, do you know why they did it that way?
I think the sense was that they couldn't really provide valid and reliable results with a small team going to each of the schools. They really needed to aggregate the results a little bit. The process really was one of sitting in a whole team and putting together findings and then from that recommendations and commendations. And I think in general, the Department of Education is looking to provide, having the communication between AOE and schools really happened via districts. They think of their support as being provided at the SU level, and so their responses and their feedback is really at the SU level.
So just to refresh your memory, they looked at academic proficiency, personalization, safety, healthy schools, high-quality staffing, and investment priorities. And so I don't know if you have anything specific. You've held this for a few months now, properly, so I don't know if you have any specific questions about any of the commendations or recommendations.
David, you did it one point.
Well, no, I, what I was thinking is that the, well, I think we should talk about the commendations for sure, but the recommendations could give us some guidance when we do our summer planning in terms of what we want to be looking at for next year.
And I know the recommendations are things that each school's looking at when they're creating their continuous improvement plan. For instance, continuing, one of the recommendations on academic proficiency is continue to work on developing curriculum and proficiencies to ensure consistency across schools. So that's something that we look at sort of at the SU level to ensure the consistency piece. So we are using those recommendations, but we could bring this out again during the retreat when we're starting to set goals.
Which of these things we really want to look at? What would we like to have measured? And get a report on the progress? That was my thinking about it. Because this is, I mean, these are the educational quality standards. These are the, this is it. This is the stuff that we're all supposed to be doing. It's supposed to be guiding our work. I know Andy put endless hours into development. The EQS, the quality standards.
Yeah.
So, you know, we should let it guide our work, or at least our focus. The only other question I had is whether, did they, when they came and talked to you, did they bring more materials, more information?
They did not bring materials. I feel like the people that got the most out of this whole process were the people from our team that went to other sites because they got to see how other schools operate. And in some cases, it was like, wow, that's something that we should be thinking about. And in other cases, it was like, wow, we moved way beyond that. So I think the feeling was both of those.
And the other thing, and Paul, you may know more about this than Ohio, but the method that they used was, I can't think of the, they were developing statements of what they observed rather than what they think might be happening or any implications or anything. Can you say a little bit? I remember getting a, seeing a presentation at the SBA about when they were developing this, and that seemed, that was really impressive, and they made us try to do it.
Yeah, it was, and we received two days of training. Anybody on a visiting team received two days of training earlier in the fall. The notion was, you know, sort of just the facts, ma'am, just the facts. State findings in such, and they gave us sort of a format for doing that in such a way that was not, A, identifying individual schools, not identifying individuals, but was something that we observed either in the documents that were provided or in our visits to schools and the offices. And from those findings, we then came together as a group, organized around the sort of categories of equality standards, and pooled those findings with some facilitation into what were, you know, sort of distilled them up into commendations and recommendations.
Fascinating process. No judgments, no conclusions, just here's what we're seeing.
But then they do turn it into recommendations, so that is, I guess there's some form of judgment there, right, if they're turning their observation into something that they recommend?
Yeah, well, things, yeah, if they, well, yeah, I mean, if you, did you read any one of the recommendations, just the first one?
Sure. So recommendation, continue, I've read that one. I'll do a different one. Continue to examine professional learning plan platforms to ensure consistent implementation across the SU.
Do we have to have professional learning plans for elementary schools? Personalized?
Personalized.
Elementary?
The PLPs, well, if we are to be a K-12, pre-K-12 proficiency-based system, then some level of engaging students in showing their work is going to be an important piece. And one of the places we want to go with that, and we're already doing some of that work, is student-led conferences.
So, yeah, so they made a judgment that that needs to be developed?
I'm just asking, I guess, from, it's a law, right, a mandate that we have to do that for?
The equality standards state, stated grade seven through twelve.
Seven through twelve.
For the personalized learning plans for students.
Yes.
That was a huge debate. What grade to start at, and who was decided, seven through twelve.
But we're starting earlier by getting students ready for that, so goal setting is something that's very important in a personalized learning plan. And so we can't, we start as early as kindergarten. What's a goal that our class should be working on together as a class, eventually moving toward students making, setting their own goals?
I mean, I've definitely observed what Paul just mentioned in my kids' own conferences, that my first grader, I came to the conference and she had a bunch of, here's what I'm doing good at, here's what I need to do better at. I mean, she, it was pictures, some of it, but they're already implementing that, it seems like, at least in our town schools.
That was done a long time ago. I mean, my junior had that in second grade, so that's just been standard for at least-
Presumptuous.
Well, it wasn't standardized. It was more up to an individual teacher, where now it's becoming the norm.
Another recommendation, continue to examine how funding can be leveraged so that step can be accessed by all students. Because as we know, many of our step programs are special ed programs, so looking, how can we expand that so that students that are not students on IEPs can access the same level of assistance?
But that's, I believe that in, is it true that in the Brattleboro school district, our town elementary schools, they don't need an IEP to receive step?
In some schools, it's paid for locally, so the step, the behavior, the BCBA is able to work with all students, but not in all schools.
But in, is it in all schools in our district?
Nope. Green Street and Academy, those, the official step BCBAs are paid for through special ed funding.
Oh, because I thought when we had that meeting, that Greg said that it was for everyone.
Well, the issue is that if the state's giving us special ed money presently, anyway, they say that for teachers, services, that it has to be spent on special education students. And the way they check for those accountable is doing the dreaded time studies. So a couple times a year, all our special ed folks, parents, anyone who gets a dollar in this hour from special ed has to make a time study, which is for a week. They, we have to submit what they do every minute of the day. If every minute of the day that they do not spend with special education students, we have to pay the state back that portion of their state, the portion of their salary that state pays. So it gets, it gets compensated.
Okay.
It takes a nose on time, believe me.
Yeah.
So Oak Grove had a behavior specialist that was in the local budget when I arrived, and I've just kept it there for this reason.
Okay, so if it's paid from the local budget, then they can spend the time with whoever they need to, but if it's paid for by federal money, then they have to spend that percentage of their time with special ed students?
Which doesn't mean they could, one of the step BCBAs could go into a classroom and work with a teacher, and if you do this, it will definitely help this particular student, may not be special ed, but it, or it might help every student in the class, so.
But as far as the students themselves directly receiving?
Specifically, one-on-one receiving, yeah.
I see.
Okay, so moving on from integrated field review, we're on to diversity training. I think we were trying to set up a date.
Yes, and I haven't heard back yet from Dottie, but I will touch base with her again and try and urge that.
All right, we're on to E, additional information from alternative governance structure, requests for possible reconsideration of the vote. David asked for this to be on, so I'm going to hand it over to you, Deb.
I'd be happy to put it on for the next agenda when we can actually vote if we want to.
I can give you a little information about what, because I was up there yesterday with Putney and with Guilford. And if you're going, it's the fourth floor, and you have to get buzzed in.
Yeah, I saw the email.
Okay. So it was a time that first the Agency of Ed members went through what their processes, and then they asked, so tell us what's happening in your school. Set the context for us. What are you looking at? What issues have you had with the budget? And then is there any additional information or any changes in what you've sent us previously, formally as your board? There'll be a chance for, in one case, there were board members who were pro original merger articles, and those that are working with the alternative governance, there was time for both of them to talk about, here's what I think would really benefit our school. It was, then there were questions specific to that, but it was, I don't want to say low-key, but it was very non-stressful. Everybody felt like they had a chance to talk and they were questioned, so I felt like it was a good process for them.
And was the new?
She was not. She was just appointed today.
Yeah, I thought so.
So we're going up on Friday, so she should be there?
She should be there.
Now, the question I have, David said he was going, and I said I was going, and Robin and Kim-
I can't go on Friday.
Don't go.
And Spoh, did you decide if you were going or not?
Going where?
It's in Berry.
To the AGS?
To the, to the Agency of Education in Berry, Friday, three o'clock.
To talk about our forty-six plan for compliance.
That was the vote we took back December 20th?
Yeah, I know, yeah. It just, I'll just have to let you know, I'll make a note of that and figure it out if I can go.
Okay, because if there is a quorum, we'll need to have Barb warn it as a regular board meeting, and otherwise, it's, it is not me to-
Maybe we should, just to be on the safe side.
I thought she did already warn that meeting. Didn't, did something get sent?
No, it was, it was the AGS meeting last Thursday.
Oh, great.
Last Thursday, Kim and I went up, and David, so we warned that.
Maybe we should warn it just to be on the safe side, in that way we're covered.
It would have to be yes.
I mean, and if we don't have a quorum, it's not that big of a deal, but if we do, then it's covered.
Is this the meeting where the AGS presents, the AGS committee presents its plan for approval?
No, it's just a meeting with our board members.
It'll be, it'll be members of the Agency of Ed asking, what do you feel is in the best interest moving forward for the Brattleboro schools? And in one of the meetings that happened yesterday, there were people there that thought that the AGS plan was the best path forward, and there were those that felt that the original merger articles were the best path forward. There were some questions about each of those plans.
Okay.
So actually, David, I don't think we can move, I'd like to have a discussion so that we can go up on Friday, the two of us, and know what everybody's thinking if they've changed their minds. So I'd like to go ahead with this, that's on the agenda. You said there's additional information, so why don't we walk through the additional information and what you were thinking, so we know how people are thinking when we go up?
Well, the, the stuff I set around was-
And those are documents on the website?
We're, well, when we talked in December, I guess, I'll start there, there were three issues that were not yet, that were questioned in terms of whether the alternative proposal would be, whether it be possible, what was true or what was possible, what could be done, what was feasible. And one of them was hiring teachers, sharing teachers. If two schools needed to share a teacher, could we hire them? And we've got opinions from three different attorneys saying that we can, and also the mailing I sent out Monday had the actual statute that talks about that. So I feel like that's something that's changed in terms of the information that we have. We now know that legally we can do that. The other was Regional Education Assistance Fund, which is the idea of school districts, if some inequities are identified, and the example that I think is the clearest is that if somebody wanted to start a pre-K, it's a hundred and twenty or a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And if they found that, if they put that in their budget the year that they were setting it up, without already having those students in the count, that would send them over the threshold. So there could be a fund that they could draw from in order to get that program established, in order that everybody would have a pre-K. So that's an example of the way it might be used. And it was a question about whether you can do that or not, and again, we checked with, in this case, Paul Gillies, and he cited section 301, it's an portion if it can be done under the statute. And it would be union budget, the SU budget would include an item like that. And then Jim Kane, who was our, for New People, was our business manager for decades, suggested some ideas about how to set it up that would be easiest to work with. So that, but those are two questions that came up that we just couldn't say for sure, or we didn't have responses from the attorneys, we didn't have the statute cited yet, so we couldn't really say for sure whether-
So I was confused. This is, this is what you sent, the shared staff site, right? That's the document, joint agreements among supervisory unions?
That's the one that you-
That's the sharing staff, yeah, yeah. And earlier, I sent the addendum, which talked about the, this is months ago, when the, shortly after the, after December, after the application went in, we filed an addendum that talked, that talked about that, the assistance fund, and I think it also addressed the sharing of teachers.
But I thought we-
So that was a previous, previous document that you had.
I thought we always knew that a supervisory union could hire teachers.
No, this is about it. It would be hired between two schools rather than-
No, two schools, if two schools wanted to share a teacher, the supervisory union can legally hire that teacher and pay them through the SU and assign them halftime or whatever, share of time to each side.
Right, I thought we always knew that because that's how the special education people are.
Well, my recollection of the twentieth is that this concept of core teacher came up, and it was argued pretty vigorously that we couldn't do it because of the benefits issues, and it was illegal to share benefits that way.
That was if they were going to be employed by the two schools directly, rather than the SU is where it was going to be a legal issue.
So now that's, you know, that's settled. I mean, I didn't think it was settled. I didn't think that we all shared that understanding, so.
Well, I guess my confusion was, I thought the alternative governance structure, and I've asked this question a couple times and still don't seem to understand it. The alternative governance structure's idea of hiring is, was presented two different ways, I thought. One was that, say, the example that Andy Davis said. He's hired by Green Street, or, sorry, Oak Grove, and then he's hired by Dover, and each part was putting forth sixty percent or forty percent of his benefits.
I don't know about that, and it doesn't, it's not an issue for us because we're talking about a supervisory unit, and we can do it as a supervisory unit. If a teacher wants to be halftime here and in another supervisory unit, that's, you know, that's, that's to be worked out separately or differently. It's not, it's not a dream, it's not a question for us to have to worry about.
Well, so then the other question that I, that I understood, the alternative governance saying, okay, so then we could hire people on the supervisory level like we do with special ed, and then they could be paid, assigned to different places. But I thought the issue there was then, who's controlling the hiring of those staff? Because they're being hired by the supervisory union- Because they're being hired by the supervisory union but assigned to different districts.
So, yeah, the supervisory union, well, think about how it actually works. The administrators would sit down and figure out what they needed and then the supervisory union would hire that person and assign them to the two schools where they, they both needed that for a teacher.
So if the supervisory union is hiring, then that money is now in the supervisory bu, supervisory union budget?
Right.
So that's not overseen by individual towns?
Right.
So isn't that what merger does?
Well, this is the.
That's where I lost too, that's exactly my, that's why I don't follow this.
Well, two things, one is the, nothing in the supervisory unit is overseen by the towns, it's voted, we, it goes into our budget, it's voted on by the supervisory unit. So that wouldn't change, it wouldn't, you know, the same is true with Paul or any of the, any of the coaches. If they were only going to a couple of schools, then there would be apportionment for that service through the SU. So if we shared one with Vernon, no, not Vernon, it would work, with Dumerson, and our apportionment, our apportioning for the supervisory unit would be bigger because we are sharing, would be additional to anybody else that's paying their share of the special ed budget. So that's, that's one thing. And I think the bigger question about that is, if you keep putting more and more into the SU budget, it's less and less transparent, because you don't really know who you're voting for. That becomes a really big budget and it's not ever in front of the voters, and that would be an issue. But I think because the number of people that would be doing this would be really small and I think there would be a great deal of hesitation on the part of our administrators to have a core teacher in an elementary school only there half a day unless there was just no other way to do it. The relationship of the teacher and the students is the single most important factor in the kid's experience. So we wouldn't be wanting to take somebody out half-day and have somebody else come in and then this teacher's gonna drop in another school for half of the day. So it's not something that's gonna be done a lot or without great care. So I think the issue of transparency is less, less important, it's not a good deal, it's not something that's gonna happen a lot.
I'd like some clarification, Rod. I understand that we're talking about teachers that work in more than one place, is that right?
But not, not in Brattleboro, so teachers that would work and be paid partially out of one of the town, let's say, outline town schools and partly out of Brattleboro.
Yeah, and my understanding is that we have never yet in, in history had a consolidated union like we're looking at here.
Well, we do in special ed right now.
Well, and our, our three schools are consolidated.
But, but we have had for eons, teachers that have worked in, in schools all over, right?
In more than one school.
Well, we have teachers that work in.
In RSU, yeah.
So it's not a question of whether it can be done, because we have been doing it, and so I'm trying to figure out.
I think the change here that is being proposed is that, right now, it's up to that individual applicant to be like, oh, I'd like to be a full-time art teacher and I see Guilford's got a half-time position, oh, and there's another half-time position at Oak Grove and Brattleboro, so I'm gonna apply for both of those and hope they both hire me. And so the change that I think is being proposed by what David's saying, or what would be able to happen if we had a merged district, is that the SU could just say, we need a full-time music teacher and they're gonna spend half their time at this school and half their time at that school, but there's gonna be just one employer instead of the person having to get two jobs. So the idea is that we could attract more candidates by offering a full-time job where now we aren't able to offer a full-time job.
So the issue then is that if we do not consolidate, it will be more difficult to attract qualified people to fill roles like Andy did.
It's also a benefits issue, because if you have somebody working sixty percent in one, say, Brattleboro, and forty percent in, say, Guilford, they want full-time benefits. Legally, they're part-time in both, both, both schools, and then you're, you kind of have the issue with other teachers, a teacher that is full-time, well, how come they're getting full-time benefits in their two different schools? I mean, you've got a, it's a.
And which school is paying for the benefits?
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify, that, it's true that sometimes the candidate had to piecemeal it together if we had less than full-time, but it's also true that we do it, that, you know, if we have, and I did it this year with Guilford, we're sharing a person over the course of the year. Other schools do it for, you know, we do it with some frequency with specialists. So it's a forty percent here, and so Mark might, you know, Martin and Vernon might, might have called the person on Guilford so they could hire a full-time, so they could attract a full-time candidate and put it together, that happens.
And do they list that as a full-time position, then?
Because they're technically part-time.
No.
No, well, it gets, no, they are full-time in RSU, and they give, so, full-time benefits.
But you have to be really careful with that, and I am loathe to say this on camera, if we're audited by the, by the IRS, we could be fined significantly. Every single employee could be taxed.
For what's going on currently?
For what's going on if one, if we are, if we're paying a person's benefits out of Brattleboro and they're working part-time in Guilford.
So what David is proposing is to solve that problem by making that an SU hired position?
Yeah.
So that they would have just one employer, but the drawback to that is then, it's, they don't work for the school that they're working at. I mean, what about how they're officially, you know, hired, interviewed and supervised and all that if their employer is, wouldn't have Southeast? I mean, like for special ed, there's a supervisor of special ed, but there isn't like a supervisor of the one music teacher or whatever it would be.
No, I think the, one of the advantages would be to, to be, and I think when, when the hiring is happening, everybody's putting their information into the SU, so that's already centralized, so it would be clear if Martin, Vernon and Brattleboro both had a, a part-time need. And, but the, and I was assumed with what happens with all part-time employees and full-time employees is that the administrator oversees their work, and so they wouldn't be, there wouldn't be just one person that's, that's commenting on them, there would be two people that would be contributing to their evaluations and their renewals and things like that until that was pretty well established.
One of the things that I'm thinking is that, as I consider the overall size of the school systems and all, the very large total number of faculty and staff and, and then compare that to this one issue of, of several teachers with specialties that need to go to different schools that can't hire a full-time, that problem seems in that context very, very small and hardly rises to a level of, of, of not going through, not, measured against the problem of consolidation that removes so much community involvement with their schools. Is, is, the, the whole community issue of school boards and involvement is so much larger than that one issue of a few teachers moving around, that I'm wondering why we're spending so much time on that small of an issue when I know, when the time comes, we'll sit there and say, well, how do we solve this? And we'll figure out a way to solve it.
One of the reasons is that because of the declining enrollment that we see, it's likely that we would be faced with, and I think the, the, not the steering committee.
The F twenty-six?
Yeah, the.
Study committee?
Study committee, looked at numbers that indicate that that's a possibility if, if trends continue, that there may be a class of six kids in one school, eleven in another, and you might need to do that. So it's seen as one of the ways that, to deal with that reduction without having to have with one fewer staff, basically, a way to say something. So I think that's why it came up more than anything else.
But you're, now you're talking about with a core teacher, not these specialist teachers.
Well, there's, there's no, if, there's no difference.
If you're mentioning.
There's really no difference, I mean, the state doesn't designate, they say that there's a core.
Right, but I'm just saying, if you are trying to solve the problem of there only being six kids in a given grade at that school, that's nothing to do with the music teacher piece.
No, no, that would be, that would be the classroom teacher, but that person would, would have to be half-time, it could possibly be half-time in either of those schools. Other things could be done, like having combining grades, which is happening in the past to a great extent, one of the reasons that we, the test required you to be at grade levels, so, and there are drawbacks with, with having combined grades, which developmentally it's really sound.
It would seem to me that this issue of closing a school should be determined on the quality of education that the kids in a particular school are receiving, and that should be measurable in some way. We should be able to measure.
I agree.
However, education, and when it reaches a point where they can't meet certain standards, then we talk about whether we should, that school should be closed.
I don't think we're talking about closing schools based on standards, it's about, is there enough children for them to afford to run a school? That's what the bottom-line problem is here, and I don't think that it's gonna be, anytime soon, a problem for our town schools here in Brattleboro. It's something that is more, you know, hanging over the heads of some of these other smaller schools in the rest of the SU, and that was the problem that was trying to be addressed by the study committee of, if we all band together, then we can weather the drops in funding that we get when our student numbers drop, because we're all taking a little piece of that burden, instead of the one tiny school losing fifteen percent of their budget in a single year. That's what the, the idea of this is, it's not about closing schools because they're failing, that hopefully there are other ways to help those schools besides just closing it down.
Well, and it's sharing staff, so that when you're, if you are in one of those small school situations, you can share staff more easily.
Um.
So that you can continue to have a school that wouldn't function on its own. Guilford is in that situation right now, they're very open about it, that they feel like they're approaching a point of being not sustainable.
All right.
So they, they, if, under a merger system, they have several things that happen for them immediately that stabilizes their tax rate. One is the BAMS tuition that they pay goes away, 'cause they're all under one system.
So you're saying that, that part of the point of merging is to be able to spread the financial resources around to keep small schools open?
Absolutely.
Save the small schools.
Absolutely, that's what the Guilford board has been saying all along, why they were unanimously in favor of merging until, well, maybe not in the very end, I think maybe.
After merger, though, Guilford itself won't have any choice in the matter, because their school will be just part of a larger school district.
They'll have just as much choice as anyone, they're represented on the board, the merged board.
Well, they'll be represented, they'll, they will have one person in nine.
Right, or two, or two or three.
Yeah, and it could, the state board could reorganize how boards work entirely, so it could, it could be based totally on population, it could be based on whatever the state board recommends, but ideally, this merger would help Guilford in that they would have options. There could be people that live in Brattleboro that want a, a small school experience and they wanna send their child to Brattleboro, so.
Well, I think if, if, if it would have been demonstrated to the people in Guilford that, that their school was safe and, and, and protected and that a merge, and that was the point of the merger, they wouldn't, they would not have voted against it.
The, the, that's me kind of into the, the third question, which was around, was around what happens when the tax rates are, are averaged. And I've been saying all along that Brattleboro would bear the brunt of that, because our tax, our school tax is the lowest, and when you average numbers, it has to go up. And so we figured out a way to, since we've got three years now that we've been in this process, we took the actual budget numbers, the budgets that were passed, including this one, the one that we're in right now, and averaged those numbers to see what would, whose taxes would go up and whose taxes would go down, and that was the other document that I sent around, and in the sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, Dumerson and Putney, Putney less so in eighteen, but in the two previous years saw three to, to four percent reductions in their tax rate, whereas Brattleboro's went up one or one and a half percent, if we had merged in either of, of those, those years, which is not, the, the law said you couldn't have, if somebody went more than five percent up or more than five percent down, it would be limited at five percent. So that's not outside the realm, the realm of what was expected, but the law doesn't take into consideration the additional cost of living in Brattle, the additional property tax burden of living in Brattleboro, because we pay for the infrastructure that supports the entire economy. Most of the people that work in, or many of the people that work in surrounding towns, that live in surrounding towns, come here to work. They, they buy their homes in those towns, because the tax rates are significantly lower. And the difference in the total municipal tax, the town and the school tax, is anywhere from thirty to eighty, eighty cents in any of the past, the past several years, Brattleboro being thirty to eighty cents per hundred, or thousand, whichever it is, higher in terms of the combined fiscal tax.
I'm sorry, are you talking about eighty cents per hundred dollar, is that the cents that we're talking about?
If the tax rate, if the tax rate was two bucks in Brattleboro, it's one twenty in Guilford.
Okay.
That's right, that's right. And the, and not Guilford, sorry.
But, but the chart.
Guilford's taxes are, tax rate is, where school tax is higher.
The chart that you're showing here then took all of the budgets that were actually passed.
Right.
And put them on.
And averaged in the high school as well, because that is not, well, it's included. Vernon was, Vernon had people in high school, so this is an estimate, but there's not enough of a, and I checked this out with Brad James at the, at the agency to make sure the method that we were using would actually give us the result, an accurate, a reasonably accurate result, and.
But the concern I have is that the, you know, if we put the budgets all together, that wouldn't have been the budget that we would have as an SU, because we would have done other things and been able to share and made other choices. Well. To me, it's kind of like saying, we're all going on vacation and each one of us have our own budget. So you spent this much, Robin spent this much, Kim spent this much, Spoon and me, we all spent whatever. But if we went on vacation together, I would have rented a van that could have been for Kim and my kids to be together. So we would have saved money. So to me, this, this document doesn't show.
It doesn't show the savings that would happen if we were.
And neither does, and neither is there a hard, hard evidence anywhere in any document that I've seen yet where we would see savings. There are no, no jobs that are gonna be, would be eliminated, there are no retirement positions that are gonna be replaced, there are no cuts in any programs that were gonna, that are gonna be reduced.
Neither are the proposals, neither the alternative governance or.
No, but this isn't, this isn't, this isn't a speculation on what might happen, this is what would have happened had we merged with the budgets that all these communities passed.
But that wouldn't have been the merged budgets, Mike.
And you're saying that the merged budget would have been lower, and I'm saying there's no evidence of that. If you have evidence, if you got even one position that you know would be gone, I've never heard a single position.
But that, but that can't happen, because that's not the, the duty of this proposal, either for the alternative governance structure or for the merged structure. Neither one of them was to look at where you could cut jobs, it was to come up with a governance structure. So to me, it's like, it's interesting to look at taxes and what they actually are, but it doesn't show, to me, what would happen under a merged system.
I think the point that David's trying to make, though, is that whatever savings would be available through merging jobs under the merger could also be accomplished without merging by just moving those positions to an SU-wide job, is that the nutshell of it?
Well, if that, if that were to happen.
You could just save the same money by doing that instead of by merging the whole thing.
And so I don't think, from my three years of sitting here and listening to discussions, that that would be true, because there's, what people have said when they're talking about in the alternative governance structure is that they want to have local control over their teachers, and they're loathe to give up and say, we're gonna send those off to be SU teachers. So they're not gonna happen as.
Yeah, I specifically remember in discussions in Dumerson, the, the point driven home over and over again, we want control of our staff, and I'm sort of curious, has the, has the alternative governance committee changed that, are they now embracing SU-level employees?
In, if there were, in the example that keeps coming up, if we have, if we have a small class. If we have, if we have a small class, third graders in one school and a small third grade class, or a fifth, because the teachers can teach multiple grades, that it would, that one of the ways to reduce costs and keep teachers in those classrooms is to share a staff number. So in that example, that's an example where certainly anybody would support that. Unless there's an alternative system would be.
That seems to me, doesn't that undermine the we want control argument that was put forth during the discussions? I mean, I feel like there's a big switch here.
I feel like they're saying, though, we'd rather have control of our whole school except for that one teacher instead of all of the teachers.
There are going to be circumstances that come up where there has to be another viable option. They would like to have control of their art teacher too, but they don't need them for the whole day, so they cede some of that control. It's really no different.
Well, so it's moving on here to 10 to 7, I guess. But we are meeting on, on Friday and David and I will be up there. We can't technically vote again because we don't have a forum because you guys haven't been sworn in.
Sorry.
We're not gutsy. I, I feel like there'll be enough time for both of you to talk about what it is that you think would be best for Brattleboro. There, there was no, they said 30 minutes, we went into 40, 45. It was very relaxed people. I didn't feel like anyone was rushed. At least one of the two groups had people from both, people that support the alternative and people that support the original merger. And there was time for both groups to be able to say, this is where I think Brattleboro is and why I think the, this is what I feel would be best for me for.
So I guess my only question going up there, is there anything else that the board wants to have known?
I feel like you guys are going to give a pretty good, you know, spectrum of the two perspectives that we've talked about here.
Yep. Any, any other comments or we're moving on? Spoon, Kim?
No, I mean, I think you, you both do an excellent job on both sides.
All right, I'm coming back to the agenda. What's left? There's nothing we can do.
Here, it's right there.
Here we go. So David, do you want this brought back for a possible reconsideration of the vote again at another meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I want to. Well, I sent a resolution around too. Does every, did everybody get it? Have you looked at it?
Yeah, I, I got it.
No, I haven't seen it.
You need to check your SU email probably.
Oh, that's right, I did send it to the S U. I thought everybody was, was looking at it.
So on the agenda it says continuous improvement plans, but I don't remember why it's on there. Anybody have a guess?
We've got to hear about the plan for this year.
Process for approval of action plans, what used to be called action plans, and for, they've woven them together, and for approval of federal program experience requires that each supervisory union and get a plan approved and then that each school get a continuous improvement plan approved. And the new expectation is that all the new plans will be approved by boards before they are submitted to the state. So we do, is it, that's not a copy. We don't have a copy, so, and you wouldn't be able to vote for it anyway.
So we'll put this on for the.
But just so you know, there is a continuous improvement plan that has been developed for each of the schools and those will need to be reviewed and approved by boards soon.
So by, before the next meeting, someone will distribute that to us all?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll leave it on.
And does it reflect the, do the, the plans reflect the direction we try to go with gender and diversity training?
That, I don't know. I have to, I'll look at the individual plans.
You'd better, you know, it would be good to see that incorporated rather than just trying to add it at the last minute.
Yes, I will say at the SU level, that is one of the, one of the elements in the SU-wide plan. I think I got framed as supporting teachers in responding to the diversity of students.
Okay, so SBAFC data, Paul is here with us. And that was one of the things we're going to review, I think, tonight, or no? Did you have presentation to look at him?
I, I did not.
Well, we are five to seven.
We can wish it. That's not a bad thing, Paul.
Do you mind coming back?
No, I won't come back.
I was going to say that. We're on, on to the budgets.
Okay.
So we can only do this once a year, you know?
This one's not going to be tabled because we haven't. Yes, could you give us a second?
Well, where are we going to be next meeting, if, the May meeting? We don't have a slate per.
Don't jump ahead, that's on I.
Are we going to try and have an additional extra meeting to vote on some of these things like the?
We're on H. We're coming.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
So first off, I want to just let you know that, I'll just point out a couple of things here. And then if you have, after you've had a chance to review this, if you have specific questions, you can either email them to Frank or we can ask Frank to come to the next meeting.
Just comment, I think it's, it's appropriate for us as a board to read through this and email a question to Frank with a copy to everybody. No discussion or anything on it. And if we don't have questions, I think Frank comes out to a lot of meetings that we could say.
Yeah, I agree completely. The only thing I would ask, and I might say this coming, is a narrative. You know, if something is like, there's only 19% of dental insurance that we pay or something, you know, something that's just going to be flying up, we're, what, two thirds of the way through?
So there are a couple of things he thought you might be looking at.
Right, yeah, so just a narrative on those.
I think my husband right now.
So on the very first page, and all of the first page is WSESU, the full dis, not, sorry, take that back, the full district, full Brattleboro Town District. Tuition, we had upped to, it's right in the middle of the page, 110,000 to reflect out of district tuitions. And you'll see we've only spent 17.6, so that's a really positive number for us because at this point, of course, the year's not over, but at this point, we greatly reduced our out of district placements and so the tuition payments.
And kind of covered that, a big chunk of the 100 and whatever we just took, the 300 other reserves.
Oh, I see that.
Oh, yeah, the reserves. Good point.
More of those things, please.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, could you say that again? We budgeted 110,000 and we spent 17,000.
Yeah.
Wow.
And David's point is that we took 300,000 out of reserves this year and if this continues, that would be a nice chunk back.
Yeah, we're storing it back.
Yeah.
On page two, if you look at guidance salary, and this is still under Brattleboro, the full Brattleboro Town budget, there is a salary that is actually going to be charged. It's a 69,247, you see down at sort of top third. That will be charged back to a specific school. I prefer not to say it without, because it'll talk about personnel specifically there. But that's one that we may worry about.
But so what does that mean? We've only spent 24.87% of the budget and you're saying that percentage is going to be shifted out anyway?
That's going to be shifted, yeah.
So then we're actually up all that money? Do you have any further?
There'll be some more savings for you.
We haven't seen the snowfalling line yet. That's under contract until the end of the week.
You just wait. So if you look at page four, near the bottom third, it's the O3s or Green Street. That, that, so anytime you see an O3 through there, this is all Green Street. Just so when you're going back to look through it. But I do want to point out page six. There is, bit close to the bottom of the page, Green Street's over budget, 61,157. That was for emergency fire panel replacement. And I think, Mark, was there plumbing, was there a plumbing issue, flood?
Yeah.
So we are definitely over.
We don't have twice the amount that was budgeted, essentially.
We don't have insurance, is that or something like that?
Oh, no, I mean, we have insurance.
But we've had to pay out that. And I don't know what our deductible is, but that would be something that Frank can talk more about.
So we may get, we may get some of that back.
There's got to be a deductible.
So, but that was one thing that he wanted to make sure that you knew, that that's what that is covering there. Looking at page seven, Oak Grove is, starts on page seven, all of Oak Grove, all of the O4s are Oak Grove. So you can go through all the O4s and look specifically at Oak Grove. Oak Grove seemed to be in good shape. Not over, not under.
What's the O4?
Academies, Academy is O5s. And they start on page 10.
What's HRA?
HRA is the health benefit reimbursement. So last year it was not there, so it would be a zero for last year if you're looking at, at the full. Health, you can probably remember Frank talking that the main healthcare expenses are down significantly, but there is this new benefit, HRA, which puts it up a little bit, but we're still down.
That benefit, that out of pocket expense, we know is the premium, which is what we expect.
But sorry, this says in this line, about 10, on page 10, about 10 down. So am I reading this right? The first HRA is negative that we haven't spent, 24,500 that we budgeted?
No, I think we didn't budget anything.
We didn't budget anything.
This is because the healthcare changes were made after we'd already passed the budget. So I think it's just not measuring it against anything because it wasn't budgeted for at all.
And we will have a better sense of how to budget next year or after a couple of years when we start to get some statistics about how much people are using. If you look at page 12, very bottom is the Oak Grove pre-K expenses. And then into 13 is the preschool tuition cost.
So what is this category 11? It's the, it's just the Oak Grove pre-K to get there on?
And also the preschool provider tuition, that.
Okay.
So am I reading, I'm looking at page 13, the bottom line is if everything from here till the end of June stays right on budget, we would have an $861,000 surplus?
That I'm not certain, because if you look.
I don't think so.
That's just where we are.
That's just where we're at, that's what we're at.
And some people may be concerned that we only have 861,000 left and we still have a good portion. But one of the messages I'm asked to give you is that annual contract, so any staff member who's on an annual contract, all of that salary has been encumbered already, so it's already been pulled out.
And insurances have been paid for the year.
Right, so those are all pulled out, so those, that, or those weekly or bi-weekly numbers won't affect that 861,000.
So probably there will be some surplus at the end.
Possible.
But not this whole amount.
That's the, that's how we plan it.
All right, that takes us up to I. Next agenda items, I've got a whole bunch of stuff in yellow, I'm going to have to go through what's done. Anything else that people were going, wanting to have on?
When do we, I would like to have, at some point in this year, the sooner the better, discussions on measuring our goals.
Okay.
That's a summer.
I think that's a summer retreat, but I'll write it down.
And what we were talking about with the education quality standards is.
I put that down too.
Well, then maybe in order to measure goals, you have to have the goals.
We do, we set goals.
And they're already in existence.
Yes, heck, in August.
Yes.
Well, that's what we're going to do at the meeting is set goals, so that's why she's saying this is a good item to discuss.
Why are we waiting until August?
We did it last August.
Halfway through, yeah, but isn't that like halfway through our year?
It's before the beginning of the school year.
Yeah, but as far as we're concerned as a board, we turn over, as many do, in March. So our, it seems odd.
If our goals.
We have a budget that goes from July 1st to July 1st. And goals that go from September to September and a board that goes from March to March.
The, the goals go from September until school's out because the kids aren't there. Basically, the summer is time when we can sit down for a long, a good long period of time. Typically, a couple of hours, two or three hours of break and then two or three more hours to really look and to do the kind of work you're talking about. If we tried to do that tonight, or start that tonight, we'd be here until nine and that's not.
If we were the town board, what you're saying might make sense. But because what we're administering is schools, we have to, if we're going to measure what's going on in the schools, we should do it after the school year has ended. You know, we can't just decide like, well, we got elected in March, so let's look at what's happening right now. The school year has nine months and at the end of the year, we see, how did that go? How should we do it for next year?
Yeah, what do I do?
I mean, that sort of makes sense, but I'm, I'm wondering if by the time we decide what the measurements need to be.
Well, one of the measurements I'll point out was, one of our goals is to get into the schools more often. So I think that will be easily measurable if we can all just say how many, what we've been doing. All right, so confirmation of location of next meeting.
When is our, when is our next meeting?
And when is the next meeting?
And do we need to have an extra meeting before that?
I don't see anything on here that has to be done in order for people to move forward with anything.
Okay, I mean, the most urgent, I guess, seeming item would be the kid going to first grade, but that's probably fine to wait till May too.
Right. So I think we're okay. Administrators have any concerns with not meeting until May? So don't hold back over that.
Don't, don't look so disappointed.
Really.
I mean, I wasn't proposing that the administrators come. I just meant, is there one of those things where we have to like meet at central office and vote real quick and approve these things?
No, I think we're good. So the next meeting, where would you like it to be, folks? It's on May 2nd, Wednesday? I think maybe it'll be warm, I'm going to go out on a limb. No more snow.
Not good.
Where?
David said Green Street again.
So we haven't, we hadn't been here for a long time, so we can stay here for a couple of days.
And maybe we'll be able to see the art, the art be up then?
Oh, yes. That would be perfect.
Beginning of four gorgeous days of great weather.
Then we'll have to start, we have to go to E.S. More than just.
Well, we'll go.
Oh, yeah, we've never gone back to there.
They have A.C. in the summer too, so.
We're on to other, Lyle hasn't.
And I have one other, we should have gone there. On Friday, the Community Equity Work Council from Brattleboro area is welcoming a group of students from College of St. Joseph. One of the students will be spending a day, part of the day at Academy School. She's interested in social and emotional and health as it pertains to students. David is part of that, I think he's taking a lunch for her Monday that day. So we're looking forward, there'll be people going to retreat, to the hospital, to Academy School, to the police, Shattuck Police. It's a way to really focus on attracting some young people and young people that might be minorities to our area. So looking forward to that.
There's a lunch with the, with community people and a dinner with community people.
Which Friday is it?
The first, our first effort in attracting these students.
But aren't you supposed to be up at?
I'm taking my person, I'm endorsed to Academy and somebody else is, actually, I'll have time to get her and take her to lunch and drop her off and then I'll go.
We, we have to be at 2:30, right?
Yeah, did you want to?
2:30, 2:40, yeah.
Do you want to carpool up?
I think I may be leaving kind of on the margin of the time.
I think Lyle and I would probably be able to.
What time is it?
2:30.
And Barry?
I thought it was 2:30.
2:30, Barry?
Okay.
So we have to leave here about 12:30?
That's kind of pushing work.
That leaves time for.
I have 2:00.
Okay, let me check.
And it would probably be about an hour?
Yep.
Probably.
Till 3:30, so.
I think that's two, according to my schedule.
We could be home by 5:30.
It's two till?
That's what I have in my calendar and I.
Let me check.
Let me check.
So I can still make it through the doors.
2:30.
2:30. I have been the email from you, Jill. Maybe you just were trying to counteract here. Illinois time, I heard it happened, really.
That was for Jill today.
I have 2:30 everywhere.
There's only so much that one can ask.
You were early to meet.
I'm with Robin. There's a different time out in the Midwest.
Well, to be fair, you're the one who told me about you only have time, so.
That's right. We are, people out here are nuts.
Getting sworn and just stopping by the town clerk?
No, I think you were supposed to do it at Central Ops.
But you can go there as well.
Well, I used to.
So even closer.
But yeah, you can just go to Barb, it's right down the street.
Okay, so I believe we are on to adjournment, if anyone does have anything else.
We can't move it, so we just have to do it.
Everyone just.
We don't even have to mention adjournment.